Meeting called to order, salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call of members.
Trustee Tremblay.
Here.
Trustee Malinsky.
Here.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
Mayor McFatrich.
Here.
Presentation, whoops, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. We have a motion?
So no.
Two second, second. Any corrections? I take that as a no. Call of favor.
No.
My eye, close, motion carries. Uh, presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. As there is no one here tonight, we'll dispense with that. Report from the code enforcement officer. I copied Chris's report. I know it includes other areas, but it's pretty easy to pick out the village properties. It's nicely, nicely laid out here. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to talk to him about them. You can see quite a few of ours have to do with the vacant building registry. Any comments? Keep up the great work. Okay. I will let him know that. There's my report. Welcome to the Village of Champlain Board August meeting. We've had a busy month in the village. Progress is continuing on the water line replacement. I wish to thank all those residents who have been patient as the heavy equipment passes through their yards. Also, I remind everyone to slow down through the work zones. We are also happy to share that the basketball court has been resurfaced. And I was going to say there will no longer be a puddle in the center after every rainstorm. There's just a slight dip.
Just off step from the center. I'm just waiting here about.
And it, and it drained quickly though.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's a huge improvement.
It's, uh, I think it's permeating in.
Yeah.
And that if you get, you know, once you get pollen and dust and stuff, that could slow it.
Yeah.
But I, I've seen some pictures, it hasn't, it hasn't got back.
Okay.
She gotta, they gotta become, they're gonna come to do the wastewater plant and some other stuff anyway.
Okay. Anyway, it looks great and I, and I will share that the Rousen's Point Champlain Kiwanis Club did vote to purchase the paint and the stencils and they will do the striping sometime in the next month or so. Always looking for volunteers though, so if anyone wants to help, let me know. Our annual ice cream social took place this past weekend at a new location, the playground, which allowed families with children to use the play equipment. A huge thanks to Stuart's for the delicious ice cream and a shout out to Mary for all the organization of the event. Thank you, Mary. And I think Nikki ended up scooping most of the ice cream, so thanks to her for being the head scooper. And, and finally, I just want to add that the parks are looking so beautiful and I'd like to thank the DPW for their diligence in all the mowing, trimming, and playground maintenance. I hear comments daily about the beauty of our parks. We had a wonderful turnout for the concert with Taylor LaValley. It's so rewarding to see people gather together to enjoy some great music in our beautiful Bill Earl Park. We really, really tried hard to have the now and then concert last night. A good crowd arrived, the food truck was all set up, the performers began singing, and a storm rolled in. Rain, lightning, and thunder surrounded us. Thanks to Ron and Marie for their music, which was lovely, but short. We'll see you again next summer. Busco Bandits will be performing on August 18th at 5:30 PM and there will also be a food truck there. Bring a chair, invite some friends, and have a fun evening listening to music while eating dinner. We are hosting two series of classes for children. The art classes are thanks to a grant from Stuart Shop and the summer boost classes are paid for by a private donation, but I'm going to let Nikki fill you in on those details. The farmer's market will continue through early September. I encourage you to stop by on Saturday mornings from nine until noon. There's lots to choose from, healthy food grown locally and beautiful crafts. Please support your local vendors. Enjoy your final days of summer and I'm sure that I will see you around. Thank you. Okay, uh, report from the trustees. Chuck?
Oh, I have nothing tonight.
Okay, Nikki?
Okay, so as Janet said, we have two classes for kids this month. I have the summer boost camp, which is working on academics, more geared towards math and reading in a fun way. So they're all games and it's ages five to whatever grade five is, 10, 11. Today I had seven kids, so it was a good group of children. Last week I had two, but there were others that required commitment. So we have two more, so the next two Mondays at 9:30 will be our next two classes. And tomorrow starts the art series. There'll be three of those classes every Tuesday at 10:00. And they're more advanced than the arts and crafts that we've done, so those ages eight and up. And I think I have about eight registered for today.
Wow, that's awesome.
Yeah, I just got two more tonight, so it seems like it's gonna be fun. I worked with some of the materials today at Lake Alice, so I'm excited to use it tomorrow. Wednesday night at six, we have Clinton County Mental Health coming to the library and this event is geared towards adults. We've already had one for elementary age children. They read stories and did some activities and it was all involving mental health, like how to cope with it, how to share if needed, and any resources that might be available. Last week we had a teen group and I think I had about nine show up for that one.
That's a great turnout.
Yeah, and they played a Jeopardy game and it was a lot, asking questions and it got kids thinking. They didn't share unless they wanted to. And the mental health department is trying to collect some data so they can put out resources or programs into the counties. So it's a, it's good for both, for both parties, those who come by and implement the health department. And if anyone attends, you all earn a $30 Target gift card, so.
Oh, great.
Yeah, head on over.
Or incentive.
Yeah, a little incentive. So it, it was a big grant they applied for to hold these and this is like their pilot program right now, so. Come to the library Wednesday at six. We are also going to be holding in October our annual library accrual. In the past, we've only held it for one day and that includes around 30 of the libraries in our local areas. And this time they decided, all the librarians decided to do it for a full month because depending on their hours, some of them are only open a few hours on a Saturday and you couldn't really visit multiple libraries within that short time period because we do have one that's way out in the reservation, Pososni.
Okay.
And, and I think St. Albans maybe participated last year, so it's a very wide area. We went to Keysville and Peru one year, so you know, if you want to visit more than one library and when you do, you get a, a stamp on this passport and then you can hand that in at the end of the month to earn prizes. So it's nice to get you out to see all the libraries and the different programs they have. And myself, it was nice to see because it helped with more ideas or things that we can integrate with our library. So most of them will be holding small events throughout the month and I encourage everyone to go out and get a library card or visit these libraries. That is what I had.
Great, thank you. Kim?
The water board report has been finalized and sent to my water board members for review and comments. Two members have already responded, I'm waiting on the other two members. So as soon as I receive those, hopefully in the next week, that will be forwarded off to the two boards, the Village of Champlain and the town board, so it is done. I wanted to thank Mike for working, doing all the legwork on getting the paving done in the basketball court. It does look beautiful. And thank you to the Kiwanis Club for the very generous donation of the stencils in the painting by, of the court by their members. It is very much appreciated. I also wanted to talk about the meeting that was held last week with the town. Mike and Janet and myself met with Rick Hunter and Tom Tremblay to discuss some questions that they had. Their letter with the EDU report. Their questions were on the ASBILTS and the diamond mapping system. So Mike was able to explain everything about that, why the equipment is not really shareable and the fact that we really never received ASBILTS after the project was done, which we should have, but that's a whole different story with the contractor. So he also went out in the field with Rick Hunter and was able to show him some of the things that he was talking about. So that gives the town a better understanding of why these things are the way they are. And the, I have my notes from the meeting. I was happy to be able to participate even though it was from afar and unmuted for quite a bit of it, but those responses will be shared in next year's report.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I thought that was a really important meeting.
It was.
Very, uh.
It was very informational for everybody and I think, I think, Mike, you taking them out there to see what you were talking about with the, would you go look at the hydrants or something?
Yeah.
I think it, it's just gave better understanding.
Absolutely.
And, Mike, I just have one question for you on that. Does that diamond map system, do you have a backup on that? Like, does that get backed up every night or?
As soon as I enter, it's backed up in two places.
Okay, okay.
Please cross, cross, you know, world each other so that way.
Okay, so if you deleted something on your phone, you have two options to go back and get it, okay?
It's a, it's a, it's web-based.
Okay.
So it's, and it's stored in two areas.
Oh, good, okay.
That's it? Great, thank you. Uh, report from the clerk treasurer.
Everyone has their staff reports for July of 2024. Of course, we can't, still early, new year.
Yeah, we look so good.
It does, it looks really good.
Looks really good at the beginning.
Um, we can do the warrant because the transfer doesn't have anything to do with the warrant.
Yep, let's do the warrant.
We have additional invoices for the warrant of $13,604.71 for a total warrant of $40,569.90.
May I have a motion to approve the warrant with the additional invoices?
So moved.
And a second?
Okay.
Questions? Any questions on any, any of these? Is my, um, my art supplies in there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's in the other warrant, I mean, it's in the original.
Oh, okay.
These are just the additional invoices that we got from Friday to today.
Yeah, quite a bit.
I have just one question. And this might be more of a Mike question when either than yourself, but the basketball court that figured, does that include?
That she said.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, she didn't send me a bill yet.
Okay.
I wanted to wait anyway this year's cutback to me.
On the little debt, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Mayor McFatrich.
Aye.
We have a, we had to make our first bond anticipation note for the sewer project and of course we know that we had already discussed taking that over. So we need to, um, 2G 97 30.6, bond anticipation note 34,000 from G 898, the reserve for solid waste facility, 34,000.
May I have a motion for this? And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Mayor McFatrich. We also have two invoices for the water project, or no, we have one invoice for the water project for Barton and Le Judas of $1,600. Do you want to do them both together?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
And then we have one for the wastewater treatment plant for TJ Fiaco for $145,175.01.
That must be for the water, maybe for the sewer.
That's for water.
Oh, yeah, it should say water.
You might, you might have swapped them, I think.
It should be, it should say.
No, no, they're both, they're both for water, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Both water, sorry.
Paris is sewer.
Yeah.
Yeah, Barton and Le Judas though was for water because that was for, um, Mancini.
Yep.
They're both water, I'm sorry.
Okay, so they have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
And of course we know that the one for TJ Fiaco probably will be paid for another two weeks to get.
Yeah, there's a light.
Authorization from RV, but we still have to approve it first.
Roll call?
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Mayor McFatrich.
Aye.
Thank you, Anita. A report from the superintendent.
Definitely been busy with the water project. Had a lot of date tickets from either the project or other contractors or homeowners or whatnot. Water main is going, letters slowed us a little, but the new main is in all the way to, actually, it could run in front of here. It's stretched from, I don't know if last month I put on air, but South Street is all, is completed. Everybody's hooked up, that lane's shut off. On Route 9 side from South Street to Ashline Drive was pressure tested last week, chlorinated, both samples passed, they started to tie services, they got four services tied, so people are starting to get switched over to the new, the new line. They can only go as far as Ashline because we're waiting, they were supposed to be here today. Turner wants to do boards, they gotta do one for the board patrol and they got four here to do and they found out last night that they pushed it out till next Monday, so the board under the side orders are done, but that'll continue. It's gonna be slow going from here down to Cedar Street because there's so much underground infrastructure. It's, it's gonna, it's gonna be, it's gonna be slow going. We're gonna have some boil water orders. Can't help it, we gotta tie in Ashline, we gotta tie in Pine, this vault, so there's gonna be a bunch of boil water orders that we can't, no way to, no way around them. So they'll be coming here in the next, in the next few weeks, those will be starting. Expect delays in the road at least Monday through Thursday. Some of the traffic here has been not too wonderful, going around the flaggers or passing cars. It's, people are in a hurry and best thing to do is just avoid the area if you are in a hurry. I mean, we want these guys to be safe. On the water side, also had a couple of PRVs that cartridges had failed, that had put cartridges in. On the sewer side, actually Paris showed up today to move the grit pump. They still got some work to do at the plant. We, uh, there's a, there's a broken valve on the drain side of the sewer tank, we did hand dig it. Got to get material here so we can get that changed. We're working on, um, well, parts were ordered. Parts were ordered for the eight sewer tanks, the digesters and the aeration tanks back in December of '23 and it's supposed to finally start shipping '26 of this month, so it's definitely a long lead time, but can't help it, I mean, it is what it is. We had a bunch of water backup issues down there too, between the lay of the land, I mean, it's sitting with a berm around it and, and all the rains we've had. I'm in the process of, I gotta try to get some drainage in. Some of the old drains through the berm were, were broken or plugged or in, one of the drains we had inside, they happened to dump a, dump truckload of stone over the top, so it plugged everything, but I finally got one of them open, so at least our pump will work. I'm in the process of tearing out the roadway going in and lowering it because we had such a steep drop off. It made it, it made it difficult, especially with the new UV building. We have that much less real estate and like for plowing in the winter, you, you can't turn around. So I had to widen, I had to widen around our tanks because we're gonna have to get VAC trucks in there. So we, we're in the process of, of putting stone in and digging out the, the clay bed that's in there, so that's another. Wanted to have it done, but with the rain, it really, it really slowed us down, so I don't anticipate, it won't be for at least, it's gonna be at least a few weeks probably before they get back here to, to look at the paving of that. Still waiting for the quote. We can get that paved and maybe get that project finally, finally squared away. Few pieces of equipment had to go to the shop or one ton had to go in. We had power steering line leak and they found an oil cooler leak. Cable broke for the transmission and the lever on the, on the side of the transmission, but that's, that's all been repaired back in service. We did a few patches, one on Church Street where we had a break a long time ago and I had to keep putting stone in with all the rain, we were having issues. We finally got that one patched in the corner of Walnut. We had a break this spring there, that, that one's patched as well, so that's taken care of. Obviously, mowing and trimming, the, the moisture, it's been, the weeds really do grow, so we're, we're trying to, trying to keep up with that. There is a bunch of other work that needs to be done that we're trying to get what we can done. It's just we've been overwhelmed, I know we've got, we were supposed to start that sidewalk in July and replacement from Church Street to Cedar Street and that hasn't happened yet. As soon as we can get going on it, I gotta start taking, taking that sidewalk out and getting it formed so we can start putting new sidewalk in there. Summer's getting close to the end here. Other than that, I've got a bunch of other stuff to do for sidewalks, crosswalks, paint showers. There's a bunch of other stuff that I have to do that I know the county had given us some stuff with the grant money and just haven't had manpower to, we've been short manpower for the last like month. Just haven't had a chance to, to be able to do it, so as we get time, we'll, we'll keep picking at it, so we can do. Other than, I hope anybody has any questions on, on that stuff.
Mike, what are showers?
So that's the.
Share.
Share bike, shared lane from the.
Gotcha, okay.
I know, I looked at it too in my book.
Gotcha.
Shared roadway.
I guess if I've broken it down, I would have gotten it.
And then I also have one person request. Our Main Street lift station has been the, our control panel went a long time ago. Like, oh, I don't remember, it's been a long time and I had to, I had to rig it up so it'll work on floats, I've got it bypassed. That needs to be, we need a new panel there, we can't get parts for it anymore. So not just the panel, but the piping inside that Mainless, uh, Main Street Lift Station tank, stainless rails and piping, the piping is, the sewer is acidic and over time it's ate the, the piping in there, so I know our electric, electricity costs there are astronomical and some of that too, you know, every time those pumps start, if the piping is leaking and it's going back in the tank, you're recycling that water, so it's that much longer as a run as well. So I'm hoping, you know, once we can get this lift station fixed, it'll cut, it'll cut some of that cost. I did go out to get, talk to a few people to get prices. I got three quotes. The first quote is just for the, the panel. No installation, no bypass pumping, you know, to, to change out the piping in the tank. And that one you can see the price as quote one. The second one was a new panel, the controls installed, but no piping or rail system in the tanks, no bypass pumping. That is the second quote. And the third quote is complete everything. New, new control panel, new rail system, new piping, the bypass pumping, auto dialer, installed labor, the whole works is the, is the third quote. And that, that company there is out of, that's probably the closest company, but they're out of Fairfax, Vermont. And I know that the, the second company I'm hearing to buy their brand pumps, usually they're about a 26 week lead time. Pumps we have, they come out of Texas and the last ones I ordered pumps and within, I think it was probably less than two weeks I had them, so it's huge time difference. So I'm, I'm asking the board to, to go with quote number three to get that whole station rebuilt. They did give me a quote to not do the piping, but they, they wouldn't warranty it if we didn't do the piping. And it, the piping is worn out just from the, from leaking and the friction of the water going through. It really needs to be, the piping needs to be changed. The only thing extra on this, we already purchased a check valve, so whenever we got that system down, I want to change those check valves in the tank because we bought three new check valves, the check valves are bad, so we want to coordinate that so when they have that down and bypass piping, yeah, we can, we can put those check valves in. And we, like I say, that, we'll do the check valves, we already own them, we already purchased them a while ago, but it didn't make sense to try to, when they got the pump here is the best time to do it.
Yeah.
The biggest thing with this is gonna take a little bit of time for them to get their material here and the weather, because if we have storms with high flows, you can't, so that's the other thing. So when they do this, they would bypass pump during the day when they're, when they're working on one of the three sections, bypass pump it and then at night flip it back over so it can run as regular, so there's no, nobody has to monitor a, a diesel pump or anything like that. But that's what the, what the plan would be. So I'm asking the board to approve the amount of, per quote three of $65,656.54 to replace the Main Street auto piping and, and panel and Main Street Lift Station.
Let's get a motion on the floor and we can discuss it.
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, questions for Mike?
And I do have the, the quotes, I didn't print copies, but if anybody wants to look at them, you're welcome to, to look at them.
Mike, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, Anita, where would we possibly get the funds from?
From the reserve account for repairs that has $300,000. Yeah.
I mean, down the road, we gotta get, this is a, this is our, our, this is our major pump station because everything, everything on this side of the river goes to them, it's pumped across the bridge, sent down. I mean, like Elm Street side, it gravity feeds down, but everything on this side has to go to that station. Later on, there's gonna be other stations, the pocket station needs to be redone too, but this is, this one here is the, one that needs, we're, we're in borrowed time, we have been for, for a while. This weekend, we've got one pump, rails that are broken there, we're running on two pumps and with the rain we had, it was close to, to being to the point where it could run over, so we're in bor, we're in borrowed time. We have been for a while.
Yeah, yeah, we're really lucky that nothing happens.
And this is all related to the wastewater plant?
Yes.
Correct?
And, and how long did you say this one would take?
I don't remember. I'm not, I don't remember 100% sure, but I want to say by the time they get the stuff and get it done, you're, you're, you're gonna be close to fall here.
Yeah, okay.
I would say, depending how far out they are, but I would say we're probably looking at, maybe as of right now, maybe into October, probably.
Two months or so?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I can, I can get a, a closer timeframe, but I'd say you're about two months out.
Okay.
By the time they get the stuff and get it done.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? All right, roll call?
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor. Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Mayor McFettrich.
Aye.
Anything else, Mike?
No, I think enough.
You did, but this is a real
We have to have it, we don't, we're in a position where, um, we, we really don't have much of a choice.
No.
No. Uh, correspondence?
Correspondence from Roberta Davies regarding vacant building registration. Correspondence from Franklin County Solid Waste regarding, uh, testing, donation letter from North, Northern Tier Housing. Chips balances from New York State DOT. Correspondence from Champlain Technology Group regarding end of support for Panasonic PBX Telephone Systems. Correspondence from Skyler Cruz Warzy regarding village town intersections and traffic lights. Second quarter sales tax revenue of seventy three thousand nine eighty sixty five.
Any questions on the correspondence?
There was one, number eight, it wasn't on the agenda. Um, Troy and Banks utility.
Oh, that?
Oh, yeah, that's
Yeah, that came in and I didn't get a chance to
Yeah, so we have correspondence from Troy and Banks regarding, um, checking our electricity with nice sake, to make sure we weren't overcharged. Um, we have a total credit of one thousand thirty eight dollars and twenty nine cents on our, uh, wastewater treatment though.
Nice. Yeah, that's great.
Yep.
Okay, um, under new business, um, I gave you a copy of a letter from a resident who's writing about the vacant building registry. And I think we'll discuss this a little bit along with the other one that was in the correspondence. Because it's a similar situation, and really, the code enforcement officer will be dealing with these, but I think some input from the board would be helpful. So, let's go to the one that is the two, um, properties on Route nine. Um, one one two five five and one one two five seven. Mary and I were discussing water usage at these two. And I, you want me to summarize this as best I remember, Mike?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so the, the one that ends in five seven, it, it looks, according to our records, I believe, that there's been no usage since the year two thousand. So although, the, the claim is that the building is not vacant, uh, there hasn't been any water. Can you add to that, Mike? It's not turned on, there's no water there.
No, water's not on there, there's no meter, we never put in, um, I mean, it could be an old meter in the building, but water, since I've been here, we have not, um, been stated in service to that building. I mean, it might be water through the curb stop, I don't even, I don't even know. Just because that was way prior to me.
Yeah.
The, the other property.
Yeah, the other one though.
The other property, he comes in the summer, we, we usually gets a hold of us, we go put his meter in, turn his water on, and then the fall, before it gets cold temperatures, he calls us, we remove the meter drain as it doesn't freeze, and shut his water up at the street. He comes in the, he comes in the summer.
Yeah, that one we could say is, is inhabited, I would say. I, do, do you agree?
Is that one one two five five?
That's in the five five, yeah.
Yeah, he usually comes in the summer. Comes on the weekends and whatever stays.
Okay.
Till late fall usually.
Yeah, till it gets, you know, freezing temperatures.
Okay, all right. So I can share that information with the code enforcement officer, and then we can respond to, uh, this gentleman and explain that. And then, along the same lines, the other letter that was in correspondence.
Janet?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the one for one one two five seven? If that was turned off in twenty twenty and there hasn't been any usage since twenty twenty?
That's vacant.
Two thousand?
Two thousand.
I was gonna say, well, it says turned off twenty twenty, no usage since two thousand, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, no, I think, th- those are my own notes, and I think, I think the main point is two thousand, yeah.
So that one would be considered as a vacant?
Yes, yes. All right. And then the other letter was regarding a property that's been unused for years, and she's wondering if she's maybe grandfathered into something, because they bought it vacant and then it continued to not be used.
They lived there for a while.
Okay.
They, after that property was purchased, there were, there were people living there, they were our neighbors.
She said it's been remained vacant ever since, I wonder if they rented it to somebody or?
Mrs. Davies lived there.
Oh.
Bobby Davies.
Oh.
I believe this is probably her daughter.
Okay.
And it has been vacant for quite a few years now. But after they bought it, they live there, or at least Mrs. Davies lived there.
Okay. I mean, if they were, if they were still coming back and forth to stay in it, then it wouldn't be vacant.
Right, but that's not the case.
That's not the case now. All right, so I think this falls under the policy of it being vacant. Okay, I'll share that information with the code enforcement officer. And then we'll respond to that. Any other comments on, on this? Okay. Um, old business, uh, we started talking about the speed bumps or speed humps, they, they have different names and different heights and different things. Prospect is our
Yeah, I gotta do, I gotta do a little Kinda do a little more research on them, I guess. No, I mean, they decided to go ahead with them, there'd be, have to be a, a wide shallow.
Yeah.
So it doesn't disrupt, um, there's a, there's a few options, but, um, I really haven't, uh, dug probably deep enough with everything going on, I should've had that, and I forgot, actually, I've forgotten about it.
Okay, well, um, I know the residents, well, I, there's speeding on all the village streets, we know that, but prospect seems particularly bad. Because it's the back door to go to Russell Point, right, so.
I mean, that, it's something we, we should look into, uh, at this time of year, we're probably, should wait till spring. Because if we get them and get them installed, you gotta take them back out for, you gotta take them out to plow.
Yeah, we're so close to winter, I'm sorry to say.
It gives us a little bit of time to, to, to get pricing and, and see exactly what, I think it's something for future, but I don't know if, I don't know if they would get in before.
Okay.
If that makes sense. Cause we, we have to take them out once in a season.
Right.
You, 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 you rip them out with plow, you
Yeah.
That's the only.
I just want the residents who might be watching this to understand that we really are taking this seriously, and we do wanna move ahead with this.
And there's a few options, I, and I have to do a little bit more, um, research.
Okay. And that radar sign, is it still the angle or is it another?
I believe it is, uh, it's one of two things, it's either the angle or there's a problem with the sign.
Okay.
So, um, I gotta get up there and take it down. We have an empty truck and I don't know how long
Oh, yeah, that's true.
I'm gonna have to use a truck and ladders probably.
Okay.
Put the ladder in back of the truck and try to get up and, and, it's heavy, that thing, I'm gonna try to set it on the ground. We're gonna try to drive and see if we can get it to pick up.
Yeah.
Um, when I tested it, up in front of it, um, it showed on the laptop that it was working, but, um, I still have to verify that. The, the original one there worked, was mounted on a, on a telephone pole. And I believe between the, the lines, between the wind and the frost, I think the pole changed angle. Has to pick you up for two seconds continuous, uh, to do a reading, and with it coming up the hill, I think the angle's not. And it's hard to, you know, you've got a square this big, it's hard to know exactly where that's pointing, it's gonna have to be, move it, you know, move it, keep moving, and those brackets, like those aren't adjustable, they're solid, so I have to try to make shims, take the bolts out.
Oh, my gosh.
Ligue, it's lugged to the pole, so I have to try to make shims and, and try it or move it and then see. It's, it's a trial and error to get it, and I haven't been able to get back up to do it. Um, but I, and I told the resident that lives by there that I would get up there as soon as I could, but I just haven't been able to, so.
The Church Street one works well.
So, not always though.
No, always.
I gotta check that one, because I think the timer, it goes in stealth mode, so it's reading, but it doesn't always show you. Cause you can put them in stealth mode, we can still see the speeds, but it doesn't show them.
Oh, I find it usually shows me
It depends the time of the day. If it's on, sometimes it doesn't go off, and it's in stealth mode, so I gotta change the timing, I believe, on that one.
Okay.
Still reading, it just doesn't show people
And sometimes it's, you're almost up to it before the, the speed
Picks up.
Picks up.
I go up in the morning, early morning. It's right just before I get to it, it shows the speed.
Yeah, it's gotta pick it up for two seconds, I may have to tip it down here. I may have to shim it down here, it's coming up the hill.
Okay.
And that one I wanna see too, I wanna see if the battery stayed full charged, because they, the solar panel went. I had the guys install a solar panel that should've been probably on the other side.
Oh.
Uh, but
All right. Okay.
It's, it's staying charged, so.
Well, we'll continue to work on this problem, the speeding problem.
It's hard, because you, you can do whatever, but if you wanna speed, it's, uh, it's more of an enforcement, and we can't, they're gonna do it, they're gonna do it, you can't stop them, but, um, I know it just puts you in a hard spot for sure. We have no control over how fast somebody's going.
We don't, right.
That's the hard thing.
Yeah.
Spike strips, I mean, I don't know.
Just, just watch, I'll be expensive on your taxes for school buses.
Yeah, um, same thing with the, with these, um, bump. There's a few different, they make some that are spaced where bigger vehicles like ambulances can go through.
Yes, I read about those.
Cars will hit them.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, you gotta be careful what you put, if there's a, if there is an ambulance or anything on a jar. You know, so that's, that's another thing that I have to
I read about those that have the little, the dips for the
Some are, are wider. Um, yeah, they use a, they, they use a bunch of different techniques for traffic calming, sometimes they put chicane, sometimes they put, but I know it is a cut across, and even this, I think if we had them up for a while, it would, it would probably slow things down, I mean.
Yeah, I think so.
I have seen a sheriff up there a few times, um, once you get a few, they make an example of a few sometimes, but then, you know, they're busy in Russell Point or wherever, and it starts all over, so it's, uh, it's a pattern.
They cover a wide area.
Yeah.
They do. All right, is there any other old business? Is there a motion to adjourn? May I have a second? All in favor? Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, everyone.